Welcome.
You always have the whole place to yourself. No stranger at the dinner table making things awkward. Or in another room taking up space. It's just you and your people. Because why would you ever share your vacation home with someone you wouldn't share your vacation with?
Hello? I guess so.
There you go. I just gotta get up on it.
Okay. Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the Monday, April 24th, 2023 regular session of the Carmel Clay School Board. May I have roll call, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam President. On this very special evening, we are all here and accounted for.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of you to one of my favorite board meetings of the year. We are gonna go ahead and get started with our presentations for the evening with Mrs. Pittman for the 2022-2023 ISMA All Music Award.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here this evening. The Indiana State School Music Association, also referred to as ISMA in the music world, recognizes student musicians and educators for their outstanding musical accomplishments each year. It is with great honor to announce that Carmel Middle School Bands and Choirs have received the Indiana State Music Association All Music Award for the 2022-23 school year. Congratulations to our talented young musicians and directors for their outstanding achievements. We are so fortunate to have students who truly enjoy their craft and lucky to have wonderful educators who help them grow. The time and energy that our directors put into their students and their programs is just above and beyond and just amazing. It is my pleasure to introduce these wonderful educators who are representing our bands and choirs this evening, and they're gonna tell you a little bit more about how they earned this award. We have band directors Becky McElhanan and Ben Maynard, and our choir director Tricia Shines.
Thank you. The Indiana State School All Music Award is presented to middle and high school music programs that meet a certain performance criteria throughout the year.
The criteria that must be met includes students from the school performing and receiving a gold rating on a Group 1, 2, or 3 level solo; students from the school performing and receiving a gold rating on a Group 1, 2, or 3 level ensemble; at least one concert band or concert choir performing and receiving a gold rating on a Group 1, 2, or 3 level performance at organizational contest; and at least one jazz band or show choir performing and receiving a gold rating on a Group 1, 2, or 3 level performance at organizational contest. We are happy to announce that the band and choir students in grades 6 through 8 of Carmel Middle School not only met this criteria for the 2022 and 2023 school year, but they exceeded these expectations. We are so proud of the efforts of all of our 6th, 7th, 8th, and 8th grade choir and band students. Thank you to the board, the CCS administration, and the Carmel Middle School administration for all of your support for the fine arts in our school district. Thank you.
We will now move on to our second and third presentations of the evening's Surface Awards and Retirements. Dr. O'Stryke.
Good evening, President Browning, Dr. Bearsford, and members of our school board. It's an honor to be here tonight to celebrate our employees with 20, 25, 30, 35, 40, and 45 years of service to Carmel Clay Schools. We are gonna begin the evening with our Years of Service recognitions, and so at this time, with those employees with 20 years of service, please walk around to the brick wall and come to the front here in alphabetical order as best you can do. We're educators. We support students. We're gonna see if we can put each other in line. And I'd like you to go around to behind the wall so you don't have to go up the stairs. Thank you very much. Perfect. Mr. Anthony, lead the way. I appreciate that. And this is certainly our favorite board meeting of the year, where we can recognize those that have given so much to our district, our students, our families, and our community. So at this time, if you could move forward, please watch your step as we have a few chords there. Mr. Anthony, come on up here. So we are gonna first recognize those individuals with 20 years of experience with Carmel Clay Schools. They will receive a certificate honoring their years of service. They'll also receive a letter, and they will also receive a special gift card that they can use to honor themselves with a gift of their choice. So we used to have the pens and the glass bowls and everything like that. We let them choose what they would like to purchase on Amazon now. So, your choice. Please, please, feel free to spend it on you as you desire. So, first, and please hold your applause to the end, and we will have you walk to the end of the stage and we'll recognize each group as a whole. 20 years of service Carmel Clay Schools, Alvin Anthony. Desiree Becker-Wilpup. Angela Kreider. Emily Good. Michelle Hewitt. Courtney Davis. Cynthia Hill. Dana Locke. Jen Marshall-Aleto. Walter Meyer. Lori Milliken. Dan Patang. Patricia Peeper. Gretchen Smiley. Michelle Solz. Vanessa Trammell. Elizabeth Wagner. Paige Weir. And put your hands together, Elizabeth Young, for all of our 20 years of service and commitment to Carmel Clay Schools. Congratulations and thank you. While Mrs. Bauer is getting a picture, if those with 25 years could please line up against the brick wall in alphabetical order. Also, if you have an honoree up here and would like to get a picture, you may come up with Mrs. Bauer real quick. Get towards the front. Get that good shot. Mr. Bostic, you're first. And as they are leaving the stage and we transition to our 25 years, I would like a special thank you to the Human Resources staff for putting together the wonderful reception for all of our honorees before tonight's event and evening. So thank you very much. In addition to our HR staff, led by Kelly Hackett to my right, also like to thank our food service staff for the hors d'oeuvres and the drinks this evening, as well as our maintenance and custodial staff this tonight for making this event come true. And then finally, our technology staff for ensuring that we have a great event this evening here at Clay Middle School. So a special thank you. Let's give a round of applause to all those tonight. And we will go ahead at this time and recognize those with 25 years of experience to Carmel Clay Schools. And after a further review, please feel free to clap after each name. All right, 25 years of experience, come on up. We're gonna start with Michael Bostic. Kristy Cloud. Mark Cole. Jeff Frizzy. Tracy Green. Jeffrey Hagnauer. Sandra Ladica. Amy Morrison. Kathy Olson. Kathleen Scholler. Heather Stevenson. And Cece Trenshaw. Congratulations. Let's give a big round of applause to all those with 25 years of experience and service to Carmel Clay Schools. And while they are getting their picture, at this time- And while they are getting their picture, at this time with those with 30 years of experience, please line up at the brick wall, 30 years of experience. Mr. Getz, you're going to lead us off. Now we're getting into the territory where many schools, let alone organizations, have employees that have been within their organization for 30-plus years, and we are certainly honored that these individuals that we'll recognize tonight have done such an amazing job over those 30 years. So please put your hands together, 30 years of experience with Carmel Clay Schools, Brian Getz. Jennifer Gossett. Jeanette Higgins. Andy Heimlich. Christina Myers. Jay Bali. And Greg Wilson. One more round of applause, 30 years of experience with Carmel Clay Schools. And while they're taking their picture, those with 35 years, please come to the podium. One more time, 30 years of experience, congratulations. And we have one outstanding employee who is here with us tonight that has been here for 35 years in Carmel Clay Schools. Congratulations and thank you, Kay Sharp. Thank you for your service, Kay. We have two employees in the district who will be celebrating 40 years of service with Carmel Clay Schools. Annette and Mike, why don't you come on up, please? Let's give them a round of applause. We're going to start, 40 years of service, Annette Lictie, congratulations and thank you. And from our maintenance department, Mike Wyatt. Thank you again, 40 years of service to Carmel Clay Schools. And from Carmel High School, Mr. Dan Bates, please come up. We would like to thank Mr. Dan Bates for 45 years of service to Carmel Clay Schools, 45 years with Carmel Clay Schools. Dan, stay up there, stay up there. Whoa, and we have signs, look at that. Dan's going to be back, but he is a social studies teacher in our great social studies department at Carmel High School, and we're very fortunate for all of his years of service here to our district. Dan, you can stay up here. So at this time, what I'd like to do is invite our 2022-2023 retirees, as we know as of this moment, to please come on up and get in line alphabetically against the brick wall there. Our retirees will also receive a certificate, and instead of getting them a gift, they will have the opportunity to pick something out very nice on Amazon. So we're very excited that they get to choose what's most meaningful to them for this great event. All right, Dan, we're going to start with you again. Yep. And then once you're done, just stand on that end, okay? All right, so our first retiree is none other than Carmel Clay Schools' own, Mr. Dan Bates. So it's certainly not often we're able to recognize someone with 45 years of service. He was hired as a sociology teacher at Carmel High School in the fall of 1978, and in 1982 he was voted by the senior class as the most outstanding teacher at Carmel High School. Once again, Dan Bates. Debbie Drummy, please come forward. After serving 25 years at Carmel Elementary as administrative assistant, Debbie retired in October of 2022, and we are certainly glad she's here tonight to celebrate with us. Debbie Drummy. Jeff Grant. Creekside Middle School. Jeff was hired as a journalism teacher at Carmel Junior High in 1992. He transferred to Creekside Middle when it opened its doors back in 2004, 2005, and he has served as both a teacher and athletic coach throughout his 30 years with Carmel Clay Schools. Jeff Grant. Rob Holman, Carmel High School. Rob started his career with Carmel Clay Schools in 1988 as a business education teacher at Carmel High School, as well as a freshman football and wrestling coach. He also retired in October with 34 years of service, Rob Holman. Susan Kylie. As Susan so eloquently noted in her retirement letter, she has enjoyed 31 amazing years with the co-op and also Carmel Clay Schools as a school psychologist, having been honored to work with great kids and families. We wish Susan many happy times ahead with her first grandchild, Susan Kylie. Chris Lanham. Chris was first hired as an instructional assistant with the co-op servicing Town Meadow Elementary and was later hired as a kindergarten teacher. She will retire as third grade teacher with 17 years of service to Carmel Clay Schools, Chris Lanham. Annette Lictie. Annette was first hired as a special ed teacher by the co-op for the 1981-82 school year and later transitioned to a special ed resource teacher at Carmel High School. She retires at the end of the school year with an incredible 40 years of service to the students and families of Carmel Clay Schools, Annette Lictie. Peggy Loffler. Peggy started her career with Carmel Clay Schools as a special education IA at Cherrytree prior to moving to a resource teacher for the 1997-1998 school year. She later moved to special education life skills teacher and finally fifth grade teacher at Woodbrook Elementary. Peggy retires with 27 years of service, Peggy Loffler. Cheryl Reitz. Cheryl joined Carmel Clay Schools in the fall of 1989 as a teacher at Mohawk Trails Elementary and later at Prairie Trace prior to moving to Creekside as a sixth grade science teacher. She will retire at the end of the year with 34 years of service to our district, Cheryl Reitz. Fanny Savage. Fanny first joined Carmel Clay Schools as a special education IA and bus aide in 2005. She then moved to the front office of Mohawk Trails Elementary as an administrative assistant. She retired in December after 17 years of service, Fanny Savage. Becky Traxler. Becky started her career with Carmel Clay Schools as an orchestra teacher at Carmel High School, Carmel Junior High, and Clay Junior High. She is retiring from Creekside Middle School at the end of this school year with 32 years of service to students in our district. Becky was also instrumental to myself as I was a student teacher at Carmel High School while she also taught there and showed me the ropes, Becky Traxler. Mary Walstrom. Mary was hired as an IA at Clay Middle School in the fall of 2004 prior to receiving a teacher contract in the fall of 2008. She retires as the sixth grade math teacher with 15 years of teaching service, and she is retiring from Clay Middle School, Mary Walstrom. Lawrence Wesner. Lawrence began driving a bus for Carmel in 2001. He moved to lead driver in 2014. He retired this past July after 21 years of service driving a bus for Carmel Clay Schools, and we are very happy he's here with us tonight, Lawrence Wesner. Leanne Wishmeyer. Leanne's career with Carmel Clay Schools started as a part-time counselor at Woodbrook Elementary in the fall of 1995 prior to moving to a full-time position. She has been a fixture in Woodbrook for the last 28 years as she has served students and families alike. Congratulations, Leanne. And let's have one last round of applause for this year's 2022-23 Carmel Clay Schools retirees.
Now you all know why it's one of my favorite board meetings of the year. Congratulations again to all of you. We will now take a two-minute pause. It's a school night, and so most of you have things to get ready for tomorrow, and the other ones get to sleep in, so congratulations for you on that. And then we'll resume the next step in our board meeting. Working, oh wait, now it's working. I love it how it turns on right as I say that. We will now move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. Numbers will be placed in a basket, and Dr. O'Stryke will call it two numbers at a time. We only have two speakers tonight, so if you just want to let us know what that order is, the first will speak and the second will be on deck. You're going to come up to the microphone here at the far, is that right, or are we doing, is it in the back? Do you know where speakers are going to?
Right there.
Okay, on the far over, it's my left, your right side, there's a microphone. So if you'll go ahead and speak that when your name is called. You have three minutes to speak. We borrowed the scoreboard from Clay Middle School, so you're going to be able to see exactly how much longer you have. And then we have 30 minutes total, which won't be a problem since there's only two speakers tonight. I would like to remind you of the guidelines. You must be recognized by the presiding officer, who is myself, and preface your comments with your name and group affiliation if possible. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Please direct your comments to the board, and no person may address or question individual board members. As a general matter, the school board will not act on or respond to questions or comments, and I, if needed, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a statement if it's too lengthy, a personal attack, harassing, obscene, irrelevant, or if not, we ask you to please observe reasonable decorum. With that, Dr. O., would you like to tell us what, first?
After the random drawing, the numbers are one, two.
Jennifer Cashin, please come to the podium.
I expected someone much taller than me, apparently, so. Good evening. My name's Jennifer Cashin, and I have three My name's Jennifer Cashin and I have three kids who have the privilege of being educated by the loving, caring, and passionate staff at Clay Center Elementary. You've probably seen me sitting in the audience for most of these board meetings for quite a while. I've sat here in support of our board, our teachers, and our community. However, sometimes showing up just isn't enough. I'm up here tonight to express my admiration and gratitude for the teachers and staff in our school district and, quite frankly, the entire state of Indiana. About two weeks ago, I attended a rally at the State House for support of public education and the angels on earth that we call teachers. Standing in that building amongst over 500 educators was an empowering experience and, quite frankly, it was also very frustrating. I don't know how we've gotten to a point where teachers are the enemies and 500 of them need to descend on the State House just to speak out on behalf of our students and our communities. But I digress. I saw teachers using the strength of their collective voices to stand up for their profession, for our kids, and for our shared communities. Now I stand before you to thank you for continuing to be a district that champions its teachers. However, it's not enough either. It's time for parents to join you in the effort to further help our teachers as our state legislators continue to move bills forward that will silence our educators, limit the impact they can have on the students that need the help the most, and pull funding away from our public school systems. I asked the board today to please consider ways to broadcast our teachers' voices across the community. We need to provide them with an avenue to advocate for school board members at the local level and to speak out against bills at the State House at a larger level. It may be too late to make an impact during this legislative session, but that cannot be a cause that prohibits us from setting ourselves up for success in the 2024 session. Let's continue to be a district that sets a good example. Instead of it being for academics, or sports, or yes, even those shiny new buildings, let's be an example of what a district can achieve at a community level by raising our teachers' voices collectively for the good of all students. We all know that a teacher's voice can accomplish corralling a classroom of students. Imagine what those teachers' voices can do collectively at the State House. I promise you, just as you support our teachers, that I will continue to show up and support you and our teachers as well.
Thank you for your comments. We will now move on to our second speaker, Becky Lime.
I guess I'm one of those parents. My name's Becky Lime, I'm a longtime Carmel resident. I was asked to testify at the State House about a month ago regarding Senate Bill 391, charter school funding and the dollar law. And due to recent events regarding Valor Charter, the message bears repeating, so I'll share it with you tonight. Let me briefly tell you about the neighborhood where I live and why I'm here today. Orchard Park, a subdivision of 166 modest 50s and 60s era homes in Carmel, was built with the second elementary school in Clay Township called by the same name Orchard Park Elementary in the center of the neighborhood. The school sadly was closed a few years ago and, as you likely already know, Valor Academy is aggressively pursuing acquiring the building. Orchard Park Elementary is unique in the school district because it is the only school building that was ever built in the center of a neighborhood as opposed to where the remainder are currently placed on main thoroughfares. I felt it necessary to speak out today on behalf of our neighborhood and point out alarming changes that could be coming our way in the form of traffic. Valor plans on opening their first year with K through 6 and then each subsequent year as the upper grade advances, adding a year, for example, 7th grade for year 2, 8th grade for year 3, and so on, until year 7, when they would be K through 12. They will not be providing any bus service and transportation will be up to each individual family. Year 1 with 56 students planned per grade and estimating a support staff of 23, there will be 415 people. Taking into account the possibilities of siblings and car pools, I subtracted 25% from the student total to arrive at 294, not including the staff of 23, which would bring the total to 317. That's 317 cars coming in and going back out of the neighborhood for morning drop-off and then again doing the same thing in the afternoon. That would be a total of 1,268 cars passing houses in the neighborhood daily and, may I remind you, we're a neighborhood of 166 homes. At year 7, provided they haven't expanded any other grades, the car count will be at 587, still taking into account the 25% for carpool and sibling. That would be a total of 2,348 cars passing homes in our neighborhood daily. Some of you might be thinking that we signed up for a neighborhood, a school in the neighborhood when we bought our homes and you'd be correct. The huge difference is that the school district provided bus service and each one of those buses carried about 60 or 70 students. The average length of a car is 14 and 1/2 feet and with 317 cars, that's a drop-off line about a mile long. With 587 cars, it's approaching two miles long. Our neighborhood, like so many other mid-century neighborhoods, doesn't have sidewalks. Families walk in the street, dog owners walk their dogs in the street, and bikes are ridden in the street. It's nice to see this vibrant aspect of our neighborhood and it's great to wave at the neighbors. I don't know where else to voice my concerns since this issue wouldn't be handled at a
Thank you. We will now move on to consent items for this evening. Do I hear a motion to approve consent items including personnel, claims, accounts payable, payroll, and minutes from the workshop session of March 13th, minutes from the regular session of March 27th, and minutes from the executive session of March 30th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a, Katie, I have a, can I insert a comment there?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification on what this part of the agenda is. I remember when I was attending the meetings over the last year or so, I would always ponder what a consent item was and claims and these things. And we've spoke a little bit about it before, but I just wanted to add a little bit of clarification. As a new board member is that something that the public doesn't get to see, that we get to see is a board that governs the administration, is we see a lot of detail. We see, you know, what I would call accounts payable detail. I think sometimes I've seen probably 2,000 line items and then there's personnel report, there's payroll report, which are some information that you would want to keep a little bit private, I suppose. And I just want to make sure the public knows that this is a very routine part of the process and that it's very common that boards do this kind of thing, not just school boards but other governing types of boards. So I just want to let people know that I, and I'm sure the others do too, take it seriously. I look through these documents. I look for anything I have, I generally have questions, at least at this point, in the first three months of being on the board, and I send them to the superintendent and he disperses them to the appropriate assistant superintendents and they answer the questions quickly and thoroughly. And so when we vote, when I vote, I'm voting that I'm comfortable with what I've seen and I approve those items for review. So I just wanted to clarify that, it's not very clear. And I would suggest that we may want to put a standard note in our minutes that would kind of indicate that this is just a routine process we go through in the board's approving that we've taken a look at these things and we're comfortable with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. We will now vote. All those in favor of approving consent, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries 5 to 0. We will now move on to the action items of tonight. Materials adoption, Part 1. Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So this evening I bring to the board for a recommendation for approval for some materials that we would use starting in the 2023 school year all the way through the 2029 school year. We adopt materials right now in a six-year cycle and so we use those materials for six years, six school years. So on this materials adoption recommendation, our materials adoption for our math programming, kindergarten through 8th grade, as well as some of our math courses at the high school. And we also have some miscellaneous courses of sub-consumable items from our IB courses at the high school, our IB English courses, and then also our Project Lead the Way courses, gateway program for our middle school programming, which we're very excited to adopt more of our Project Lead the Way curriculum in that area. So I bring that to the board for recommendation for adoption.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the materials adoption, Part 1?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Greg, did you have something? I just can't see you down there, so I didn't know.
No, I was just trying to get your, no, I have no discussion. I went through the books and I had Dr. Dudley answer some questions, so I'm fine with the details.
Okay, thanks. Just kind of signal to me, guys, because we're so in a straight line that it's hard to find, for me to see you sometimes. Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll now take a vote. All those in favor of approving materials adoption, Part 1, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you. We will now move on to our next 5.2, the authority to hire certified and non-certified staff and accept resignations immediately from May 16th, 2023 through August 28th, 2023. Dr. Bearsford.
Thank you. Every time about this time of the year, we request the board give myself, Dr. Michael Bearsford, and Dr. Thomas Oestreich the authority to both hire certified and non-certified staff and also to accept resignations from May 16th, 2023 to August 28th, 2023. The purpose of this request is to accelerate the hiring process in the summer. Personnel hired or resigned during this time will immediately be reported to the board and will appear on the personnel report at the next board meeting. But by giving us the authority to do that, we can move staff both in and out more quickly and efficiently. As you know, the summers can get pretty hectic and sometimes there are unforeseen circumstances where we need to hire folks in a hurry or someone leaves in a hurry. And it makes it all go much more efficiently. And we've made this request the last four years so we can make sure we are fully staffed and ready to go on the first day of school.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the authority to hire certified and non-certified staff from May 16th through August 28th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Comments? And before I open it up, I just want to kind of give a little bit of kind of what you said is immediately, staff and teachers are still going through the interview process and the due diligence and background checks and all that. What this does is officially you are not employed by Carmel Clay Schools until the board votes on that authorization. So, which sometimes can be, you know, they're getting multiple offers and they're not really official. And so what this is going to do is it's going to give them that official, you are approved to be a new hire, and then it'll come to the board and get also, just during that time period. So I just wanted to clarify, sometimes when it says immediately, it's not just like, oh, you look great, let's hire you. So, okay. Now I will open it up for questions. Any questions or comments from the board? All right. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, we already did that part. Yes. We'll now take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you. All right, change orders. Carmel High School Performing Arts Center addition and renovations, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is a change order for two contractors. It totals $144,385. However, about $100,000 of that will be charged back to another contractor that were part of that contractor's work was given to this contractor. So the net after the chargeback is $44,202 and we'd recommend your approval and the details in your report.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve change orders? Second by Ms. Koke. And any discussion? Kristen, yeah. Any discussion? All right, we'll now take a vote. All those in favor of approving change orders for Carmel High School Arts Center and renovations, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries 5 to 0. We will now move on to discussion items of the meeting, starting with materials adoption, Part 2. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening for discussion before the board, I bring you Part 2 of materials adoption. And as I explained in our last meeting, our materials adoption cycle, we go through a six-year cycle where we start with program evaluation and then we move into looking at developing curriculum and then materials that will support that curriculum. Sometimes the cycle gets off based on a variety of reasons. For example, we may add a new course at the high school and then we'll need to adopt new materials for that course even though it might be out of cycle in their department. Or, for example, in our first example here for world history, we're adopting new materials. Last year, we adopted our social studies materials. However, the book that the world history teachers wanted to adopt that helped support the curriculum the best was not going to be available until this year, so they used continued use last year and then now it is available, this new book, so we have it on the materials adoption for this year. And the same for our quantitative reasoning course as well, that's one of our math courses at the high school, those materials. We also have in our business and family consumer science, some new materials that we are looking to adopt for our IB business management, are also accounting fundamentals and marketing fundamentals, and then also some of our culinary courses as well, as well as principles of interior design. And then at the middle school, we have some new courses in financial literacy 7, which we're very excited about offering that for all of our 7th grade students. This is a required elective for our 7th grade students to take financial literacy, which we feel is very important for our students. And as well as another new course, career pathways in both grade 7 and 8, where students have the opportunity to really explore many different pathways of different careers that they might be interested in even prior to high school. And then coding fundamentals is we have computer coding for 7th grade and 8th grade. This is adding that option to 6th grade as a 6th grade elective as well. So those are the materials that we are bringing before the board for discussion.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Greg?
Yeah, I remember you spoke a couple of meetings ago about materials adoption and you mentioned there was a review process where there was, you set up, I think in the public meeting room. I might have missed that. Are we going to have one of those reviews available too?
So, yes, for our math, we had that review process. With these groups, they're much smaller departments and so we had parents on the committees that did the review process. So we, math was such a large group, we didn't do that for these small, most of these are elective courses, but for the math, we had that. And then last year for the world history, we had review processes as well with our parents.
Okay. What would be a good way for someone to look at these books if they wanted to look at them now to?
So for the materials that, as you can see, some of these materials are online materials. But for the materials that we are proposing to adopt, we have samples. So if there's somebody that would like to, for example, look at the culinary arts materials, we can just contact our department chair at the high school and set up a time to look at those samples that they have.
Okay, thank you.
Louise?
I'm super excited about the financial literacy offering. I wasn't going to say anything, but I wanted to. So I'm super excited. You know, as a parent of a child that is always buying tokens for Fortnite with their birthday money and another one that is always ordering DoorDash Chick-fil-A, and you see accounts dwindle, I wonder what I did wrong in the financial literacy arena. So knowing that we're going to kind of catch that at the 7th grade level just brings me a little calm. So thank you. Yeah, great, thanks.
Amen to that, for sure. No, I think one of the great things, I'll just comment too, is seeing these adoptions in the classes that are available to our students, I mean, the fact of quantitative reasoning, foundation of restaurant management, interior design, essentials of marketing, I mean, I think, I mean, that is so amazing, the opportunities that our students have and it just makes me excited. So, thank you, that's all. All right, we will now move on to our next discussion item, gift to Carmel Clay Historical Society, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. So Carmel Schools has an art, original artwork collection, about 54 pieces, I believe, and but it's been in storage for about 30 years. Starting in the mid-'70s, as near as I can tell, even I wasn't here then, but artwork was purchased and it's primarily Indiana artist, was purchased, but the idea of having that in a central collection, at that time, there was a central media specialist for the whole district. And so the concept was, we'll buy artwork, we'll have it in a central location, it can be checked out, kind of like a book. And that was the concept. And keep in mind that we didn't have And keep in mind that we didn't have internet then and everything, so things were different back then. By the time I arrived in the early '90s, most of this artwork was in storage. I don't believe it's ever been checked out since 1990. And some pieces were in offices because if they liked the piece, they might just hang... And it had a number system on them and so forth. So in some cases, it would be in offices or in a lobby area or something. But, so, and the records that I found, which were just, you know, paper and pencil, but it looked to me like over the years, there was about $9,000 spent, most of which was grants or federal, you know, different money. I don't know that it was purchased from local tax dollars particularly. But so, so it's been moved around. When I... First, it was here and when this building was renovated years ago, it got wrapped up in bubble wrap and sent to the high school and then they sent it back. And most recently, it was up in a second-story storage room in the warehouse. And then we brought it back down. And so we're asking for the board to consider... We contacted or got in touch with the historical society and they're interested in it and they would, they would display it and otherwise use it as they do other things. And they also said that if they didn't want it or if they sold, like if we gave it to them and it was sold, then the proceeds would come back to the school district. And so it seems to us that it would be of interest to the community, better interest to have it displayed at the historical society than in a storage area somewhere. So that's what we would recommend. But this evening, it's a matter of discussion.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this? I'll just say comment, I think that, you know, art deserves to be seen, so I think something like that, that is where some people can enjoy outside of the district or entire community, I think that would be really nice. So thank you for bringing that to us.
You bet.
And that will come back at a following meeting for action.
Yes.
Now we'll move on to the proposed Chinese garden at Carmel Elementary School. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This has been to the board before as a concept. And this evening, Michael Klitzing with the Parks Department is here and he's going to introduce some students from Purdue who have, along with their professor, who has developed a, you know, a concept that's got more detail now as to what the garden would look like and the meaning behind it, really. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michael.
Roger, thank you very much. Members of the board, again, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this idea of creating a new resource for the community that really celebrates some of the incredible diversity that Carmel and Clay Township have within it. Instead of spending a lot of time introducing the students, because it's actually part of their presentation, I'm going to turn it over to them and let them introduce themselves and share the planning process and the incredible plans that they've come up with.
Yes, hello. My name is Chloe and this is Molly Autumn and our professor Yiwai, and we are very grateful to be here today to present to you our Carmel Chinese Garden idea proposal. Autumn and I grew up in the Carmel area and I remember visiting the Japanese garden that's in Carmel a lot. So we are especially enthusiastic about working on another garden that embraces Carmel's multicultural identity. This began back in 2012 when Carmel established their sister city in China and the Xiangyang Sister Initiative. And in 2019, some preliminary ideas of a Chinese garden were brought up, but due to the COVID pandemic, they were postponed and in 2022 revisited. And then in December of 2022, the Carmel Clay Parks and Recreation reached out to Purdue HLA for facilitating community engagement and creating some conceptual plan development. And in January, we were able to kick this off and do a site visit. In February, we sent out surveys and in March, we created some preliminary ideas based upon the survey responses and held a workshop with the community. In April, we have just finished a draft conceptual plan and are hoping to continue that into a conceptual plan based on feedback we received. On the next slide, you can see where this is located. To the north of this site is the Carmel Clay Public Library as well as the high school. And to the south is the elementary school. And then to the west is downtown Carmel. And then on the next slide, you can see some views of the site from the west entry road as well as views of the surrounding areas as if you were standing on the site. And the next slide, we have some site analysis. And on this, we just want to show that we are keeping existing vehicular and pedestrian flow as well as preserving the huge oak and some of the surrounding trees that are on the library site.
Hi, I'm Molly. As Chloe previously stated, we created a flyer that we wanted to introduce to people to get their survey responses. And as you can see in the lower right-hand corner, there was a QR code that they could easily access the flyer. And these, we were so lucky after having the response or having the survey out for a while, we received 247 responses. And 65% of those came from residents of Carmel and a resounding 96% really loved the idea. They thought that the Chinese garden would be a great asset for Carmel, Indiana. And you're probably wondering, like, what's the significance of the garden and why it should be built? We believe it should improve and educate the youth and the important cultural representations around them, also to introduce traditional values of Chinese culture and for people unfamiliar with China to become more familiar. And then to increase local Chinese people's sense of cultural identity and unity. And then you're probably wondering, oh, well, what plants would you want to offer and include in the garden? So we also polled them about this and we got notes of lotus flower, plum blossom, bamboo, Chinese peony. And these are exotic plants and we would always use non-invasive species that are like similar or like the non-invasive species version. And then we also think that within Carmel, cultural representation is very important. That was polled, as well as cultural communication, entertainment, and leisure. And when it came to what landscape elements we would want to include, there was a resounding 202 votes for garden features and interesting viewpoints. And in our eyes, we're envisioning any sort of water feature, pergola, and that was all assessed in our survey. And when it came to a garden style, so we had like various different options. And 63% of those polled said they wanted a traditional Chinese garden. And then 69% said they thought that it was extremely necessary for children and that they thought that their children would be willing to participate in the garden. And then we really were astounded by the turnout for our community engagement workshop. We had 60-plus participants in total and we got to understand their input and their views. And we had these boards drawn up that included the different features that would be included in traditional or more modern or more of a hybrid. And it seemed like they were very much in favor of the traditional style, as you can see from all the bubbles that like really represent how much they, you know, were impacted by that. And then when it came to features, we had a resounding amount of features that people loved. They want to include festival and activity, participation ideas and participation events, and then plants such as peonies, bamboo, and the lotus flower were very popular.
So this slide basically includes some stuff we've already mentioned throughout this presentation, but just to iterate some more ideas. This garden aims to offer programs to both youths and seniors, showing its importance for all age groups through its programming. The idea of a peony garden has also received a lot of positive feedback, thanks to a generous donor in peonies. And we want this garden to host a large diverse peony population and make this one of the most enjoyable peony gardens in the U.S. Now, looking at the draft master plan, we can see a couple of different entrances that are proposed. One on the west side, one on the south side by the, towards the elementary school, and one on the third, on the north side by the new parking garage. We can also see number four, the pavilion, which is the major point of focus in this design with a covered walkway. There is also number five, a interactive water feature. And in the event that this water feature cannot be built, this space could be used as a public event space for the community. And then to respect the school board's wish, this design also shows heavy planting and a visual connection to the garden on the islands by the elementary school and having as little passive activities there as possible, just to have some site safety and visualization. And then this plan also shows where the school sign can be relocated, but that is open to discussion. Now, looking at some of the draft section elevations we have, they're just showing our proposed design plan, such as the pavilion with a covered walkway, which would be about, the pavilion would be about two feet up in elevation with stairs leading up to it. And then also showing our ideas of some kind of wall aspect to this design, such as a moon gate or a mural storytelling wall, which shows the history and culture of the Chinese people and Chinese citizens. Now, the first perspective is showing the garden entrance from the west side and you can see the public library on the left there. And then in the back, the pavilion that we have proposed, just hidden in the trees and, of course, showcasing that beautiful oak tree as we see as an asset to our design. And then the second perspective we can see is showing more of the mural and storytelling walls and the diverse peony species. These walls can also become more columnar or have breaks in the walls to encourage more site safety, if that is an issue. And then, of course, showcasing the beautiful species of peonies to make it a great garden. Now, the third perspective is showing along the entrance of the road towards the elementary school and it's just showing the idea if the sign were to be relocated. So that is the end of our presentation. We thank you for your attention and your time. So if you have any questions, comments, or suggestions, that'd be great.
First off, thank you very much. That was wonderful. You guys put a lot of work into it and you can very much so tell, so thank you for that. Before I open up to the board for questions regarding this, I was going to ask you, Mr. Klitzinger, if you could give us an update. As I noticed, there's something missing from this presentation that was talked about last time at the board meeting, and that's to do with dog park. Can you give us an update on that?
Absolutely. At the present time, we've sort of pressed pause on the exploration of the dog park. The particular site that we were exploring at River Road and Main Street had some site challenges. Part of that, that property is within a flood plain and a portion of it is actually within the floodway. So it restricts where you can actually build things within the site. There was some public comments, some definitely forward, but also some against. The park system is in the process of currently developing our new five-year comprehensive parks and recreation master plan. So we thought it was best to press pause, make sure that we have the input. Part of that master plan will include a statistically valid survey, which will be able to segment by areas of the community. And then we can determine what's the best location for dog park. So it's not that as a park system that we're not going to be looking at a dog park, but we thought it was best to press pause, get a little bit more data, and then reevaluate.
Thanks. I appreciate that update. And then next to my love of dogs is my love of flowers. So we're going to go back to this presentation and I'm going to open it up to the board. Any questions? Louise?
I don't know... Well, yes, I do know. I really appreciate the student leadership. You know, one of the main qualities in excellent leaders is that those leaders seek input from those they are speaking on behalf of or building on behalf of. So I have a question for the students. You can pick who responds. What was the hardest process or hardest part of the process of getting input from the public on the park?
Personally, for me, just experiencing this for the first time, I think getting people to feel encouraged to respond and give their personal input, I think that might have been one of the more difficult aspects to this. So we tried to make it as friendly and open to everyone as possible, but also realizing like this is for a community that might not feel like their voice is heard as much. So it's just getting that personal, like, true opinion from them.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I would like to follow up too. I really want to commend the Purdue students. This was very much a student-led project, which was one of the things that excited me about it, is it's a learning opportunity, it's on school property, it only seemed appropriate to include students in the planning process. And I've worked with, in my almost 19 years with Carmel Clay Parks and Recreation, a number of landscape architectural firms and design teams of world renown. And this group did a phenomenal job. I mean, the outcome, the participation that we had in the public input process, both through the surveys as well as in the public meetings, was on par, if not better, than some of the public input processes we've had for some of our other parks that have been, we've paid significantly more for. So I do want to commend them for that process. I thought they did a great job. And the outreach, especially to the Chinese community, it was, it was open to all members of the community to provide feedback. But it was very important for us to really understand what the Chinese community within Carmel would like to see in this type of garden. And they did a phenomenal job of the outreach to our Chinese residents to make sure that they could feel, they could participate in this process. So I want to give them a huge kudos and express my sincere thanks and gratitude for the quality of work they did.
Yeah. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. This, this is very important to our community, I believe. The diversity and inclusion and welcoming people into our community as we have more companies coming and relocating here. And it changes the face of our community and certainly I'm a huge fan of the Parks Department. Is there any way of incorporating maybe monarch butterfly habitats or some sort of beekeeping into these gardens? I'm thinking of the peonies and all of these flowers that would attract those because those two are communities that need to be fostered. And I didn't know if this would be a great place with the learning environment of the library and the school, that those could also be something that could be used as an asset and a learning opportunity.
So, yeah, when we are doing the community engagement activity, I think the, even the residents, you know, who are very advocate for the peony garden, they are very open to the ideas of integrating Indiana native plants into it. We actually have a few master gardener volunteers that is willing to devote their hours to it and then to, and then they are also advocate for integrating more Indiana native plants. So I would say, yeah, we will, if this plan is moving forward, we will sure identify opportunities to kind of protect our own native plants and then cultivate the, you know, the habitat and preserve the habitat for sure. So I will say, yes. And we are trying to really make this as a learning, you know, spaces for our elementary schools and high schools. So those are definitely under our consideration.
Jennifer, I support the butterflies, but being someone that's been stung by a bee, I can't support the bees.
One of the things that's unique about this site is its proximity to the schools and to the library. That learning component that you talked about is, I mean, on steroids here, which I think is a great thing. And one of the things that I encourage the students to do, and you can see that it kind of, some of the landscaping stretches towards Fourth Avenue. And the idea is to give a little glimpse from Main Street so that the public can see it if you're, if you're not going to Carmel Elementary or going to the library. So, but, yeah, I love the idea of having a pollinator garden or something that brings in that wildlife and the story that that can tell in addition to the cultural history that the garden can tell too.
Thank you. Kristin?
Thank you so much to the students. I just, as someone who's on the Parks Board and has kind of seen some of this design through all the stages, I wanted to just tell you, I really like this. It looks like it's just something natural that has always been there, you know, from this plan. And I, I'm excited because my youngest goes to Carmel Elementary, so he could potentially be a part of this. I just had one quick question about the mural storytelling walls. What do you envision there or are you leaving that open to the Chinese community?
So, yeah, this also comes from the community engagement and also the survey, the responses. I feel like people have a lot of passion to telling all the stories about... I feel like people have a lot of passion to telling all the stories about China, but not just about China. And then they think this is kind of a multicultural learning features that can encourage the students to come over and they really understand the different culture. So they said, you know, the knowledge that they were thinking about sharing on the wall, such as how the zodiac, you know, comes into, you know, what are the different twelve animals that comes as a zodiac, what are the different languages there are, or the history of, you know, Chinese languages. So those are the things that can also tie into some of the curriculum that they are doing. So those are some of the ideas that people just raised up, and then they were thinking the garden is not just a garden, it can also carry some of the components of a museum. And then not such intensive literacy, but have some of the components that really encourage our students to spend outdoor time, but also learning some of the, some of the knowledges.
Any other questions, comments? Greg? Oh, okay. I just have one question. As someone who's recently, has to use a cane, because my back's messed up, what are the seating options in a place like this? What are you guys thinking?
So throughout this design, we were thinking especially integrating with these mural and storytelling walls, having seat wall options for people, that it's, you know, you don't have to do much to sit on there, and also having some kind of ADA accessible way to the pavilion staging area. Those were our ideas.
No, I love that. I think it's a place, I know similar to the Japanese garden, you know, you want to walk through it, but you also sometimes just want to take a moment and sit and enjoy it, so having something like that. And I do like the ADA part, that's, I mean, a huge aspect too, so thank you. All right. Thank you so much, guys, for bringing this to us. It will come back to the board for a vote at a future meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We will now move on to reports. Dr. Dudley.
This evening, I'm very excited to share with you a new program that we will be looking at with the class of 2025, so this year's sophomores, when they'll be rising juniors. But we are looking to add our Indiana College Core to Carmel High School. And what this is, is this is a partnership with Indiana University of Bloomington to offer the Indiana College Core. And the Indiana College Core is a milestone that our students would, they would earn this milestone through a thirty-hour block of academic credit through Indiana University. And this, the College Core was put into Indiana law several years ago in universities where the students could have, they would earn these thirty general education credits, and then you could transfer them as a block, those thirty credits, to any Indiana university or college, any public Indiana university or college. And then some of our private universities and colleges as well also take the Core, the Indiana College Core. So we offer many of these courses already at our high school, and basically, our students would go through and they would take an approved program of study through IU Bloomington. And then IU Bloomington would then certify that our students met the requirements for the College Core. So as I said, it's thirty hours credits that our students take, and it can be transferred. Our College Core is comprised of college-level courses, and it's taught by our Carmel High School faculty with support from IU. We already offer many courses through Indiana University. They're called our ACP courses, our Advanced College Project course. We offer many of those courses. And so the thirty credit hours would be made up of those ACP courses, as well as courses that we offer through Ivy Tech. We offer courses through Butler, we offer courses through Ball State, and we also have AP and IB courses that could count for these thirty hours of college coursework. And that thirty hours is equivalent to approximately one year's worth of college credit. So our students would have the opportunity to transfer this if they end up going to IU, they would transfer it right to IU, or they could transfer it to any other university, public university in Indiana as well, and have those thirty credits that were certified through IU to count towards their first year in college. So the course of study is made up of competencies and learning outcomes, and they are in six areas. So the first three are those foundational pieces, so that quantitative reasoning. We look at courses, these are our math courses that we offer. So we offer Math 118 or Finite Math. We offer Calculus as well. We also have our AP Calculus, AB and BC Calculus. Those are all courses that the students could take in that quantitative reasoning. Also, another one in the foundational intellectual skills is our speaking and listening. And this is our speech class. We offer our college public speaking class that is 155, which is the IU equivalent to the speech class. We offer that at Carmel High School already. And then also in the written communication, and that would be our W 131, which would be our freshman English course that our students would take. So those foundational intellectual skills, our students would need to take credits there. And then also, they would need to take credits within ways of knowing. So the first one is humanistic and artistic ways of knowing. And when we're talking about those courses, those look at our English 202, which is our literary interpretation course. Also coming under this category would be our Design 101, which is technical graphics design that we offer through Ivy Tech as a dual credit. Design 104, which is mechanical graphics design, which is also offered through Ivy Tech. And then our AP English Lit and Composition, and our AP Music Theory, and also our IB English Higher Level Course. Those would all come under that written communication or that humanistic and artistic requirement. Then we have our scientific courses, and these would be our science courses. So we offer many of our info to Introduction to Informatics and Computing. That is one of the ones that come under the science. Our Math 212, which is our Calculus II course that we offer, already offer through our ACP courses. And then we offer many of our AP courses, so our AP Biology, AP Chemistry, Computer Science. And then the last area is the social and behavioral, and these would be our macro and micro econ that we offer through ACP as well as through our AP. Our AP US Government courses would come under this area, our Comparative Government, Environmental Science, our AP European History, our AP Human Geography. All of those courses come under that social and behavioral piece. So we already offer many of those courses currently. So the requirements for our students to earn this credential would be they need to earn the thirty credits of ICC-approved dual credit, and fifteen of those credits must be IU Bloomington credits. So those would be our ACP courses. So fifteen of the thirty need to be an ACP course. The other fifteen credits can be more ACP courses, or it could be our dual credit through other universities like Ivy Tech, as I mentioned, we offer, as well as some of our other, we have some courses we offer through Butler as well as Ball State. And then also our AP and our IB courses with successful completion on the AP and the IB assessments that students take. They could earn those credits, part of those thirty credits through those courses as well. And for our students to enroll in the ICC courses, they must have a 2.7 GPA at Carmel High School, and they must maintain a 2.0 GPA as they're taking the courses. And in all of the ICC courses, they need to earn a C or better in those courses. And the benefits, as I, you know, mentioned, is it really provides that ease of transferability in those core credits between different institutions. So our students have had, for many years, have had opportunities to take many dual-credit courses, many AP and IB, and earn those credits, but they weren't together as a block as far as a core transfer. And this allows them to have the certification. This would be on an IU Bloomington transcript that the students would have. It would be certified through IU Bloomington that they did meet the requirements for the Indiana College Core, and those thirty credits would transfer as a block of thirty credits to other universities as well as to Indiana University. And obviously, they have that opportunity to really get a jump on their future careers in college, to have that, those thirty credits. It's a major cost savings to our parents, where the, all fees are waived. I know when my daughter and son were taking the ACP courses, it was $25 a credit. Now, even that is waived. Our students that take ACP courses, there is no charge other than their materials rental, just like any course that they would take. So it's a great savings to our families as well when they can earn these thirty credits. And then also, they, the students would receive that post-secondary credential upon completion of the ICC. So the students would have an Indiana University transcript that showed that they did complete the requirements for the ICC, where it can easily transfer to other universities. So when we looked at this, we really looked at IU Bloomington, because most of our dual-credit, our ACP courses are offered through there. Many of the other universities also offer this ICC. And many of our students, I would say twenty percent of our students actually, when they graduate, attend IU Bloomington. So we have a large number of our students that do attend, so that's why we looked at IU Bloomington to form this partnership. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to the board. Any questions? Ms. Williams?
Thank you for this thorough presentation, and it is always important to expand our course offerings. I just remember with my kids, for some reason, this didn't, and maybe it's because it was not as comprehensive, but it didn't necessarily translate to you go in and you're a sophomore already. So, or the courses didn't, weren't accepted as, I mean, I know my daughter who went to UCLA, all those AP classes that we did and stressed out over, they didn't necessarily count for the same thing that the course was. I certainly understand that for many of our students, just this exposure is excellent, but for some of our children who are looking to, I mean, for a liberal arts degree, these are probably exceptional. And maybe they do transfer in, but they don't necessarily, it can be misleading.
Absolutely. So for, so the AP and the IB courses, students do need to receive a, like on many of the AP courses, they need to receive a four or a five on the AP test that they're taking. And then the different universities can use those as, many of the times, like when my daughter went to Purdue, many of them were undirected electives. They, they transferred, but they didn't count towards her major, and that's probably what you experienced as well. The direct ACP courses, many of those, like with the Core, as we're looking at the quantitative reasoning, the written expression, and the speaking, all of those would, they're IU credits, and they would directly transfer to a university such as Purdue. But with this Indiana College Core, as they're bundling, per se, these thirty general ed credits, that would transfer as a core group of credits to any public university in Indiana, now not our private universities or out of state, they would still look at what credits do you have, and then they would determine based on the major study, field of study that you need. For example, at Purdue, when my daughter went, she did take Math 118. She needed a higher level math at Purdue than, so it didn't count for anything there. So it really depends on the university and the major that the students are studying at that university. But this would be a core group of general education courses, because all of the universities, at least in Indiana, have a core group of general education courses that students need to take, and this would transfer as a whole. So it would be certified through IU, and it would be transferred into those universities. So they would be bundling it, and they're looking at a course of study. In the past, we haven't had them bundled together where the students were taking that course of study. And it's still really important for our students to work with their guidance counselor at the high school. And they work very hard with our guidance counselors, you know, contact all of the different colleges and look at, okay, how would this matriculate at this university or that university, especially our in-state universities. But this piece would transfer as a general ed. Now, they might still have some other general ed courses they need to take based on their major at the university, but this would give them at least a leg up.
And so is this part of, and that leads to the question of, are we helping these students understand for their families? Some students, maybe their parents haven't gone to college, maybe they're the oldest child in the family, or they don't come from a background of families that have a good understanding of this process, because it is so confusing. And I know there, I can't remember, I don't know if it is passed, but the law that said you have to apply for FASSA, which is also very confusing. So is this something where we can make sure if somebody wants to take advantage of this so that it really can impact the future finances and financial burden of college? Is that services that we provide at Carmel, where we are actually taking the time to make sure we're guiding them in the right path?
Yes.
And Dr. Dudley?
Yes, ma'am.
I can speak a little bit as a parent of a freshman. It's already starting for me. So we still, we have four more years of high school, and I can tell you, like, the information from the College and Career Center at Carmel High School does an amazing job of, there's already, you know, we're invited to FASSA conversations, we're invited to different scholarship things, where I would love to think I have a lot more time before I actually have to worry about that. As a parent, they do a really good job about kind of having like that communication, even at a very younger, like freshman-level age. And I know that some of the things too is like, it gets more as time progresses. So I do think that, like, just from a parent perspective, I do see a lot of communication about that. So I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just want to share a little bit of that too.
And so in addition to our counselors, we have Melinda Stephan, who heads up our College and Career Readiness arm of our counselors. And then we also have college counselors that, we have three or four different people that work, they usually are, most of them are retired counselors, where they have, they are very, very busy, where they meet individually with families that might be helping filling out the FASSA, it might be helping looking at what different universities you might want to go to or different majors, and what would be the best course with that. And so they're working with them one-on-one. And so, and that is an opportunity we have for all of our students as well, and we make sure that our students have, know that these resources are there and reaching out to them through not only their counselor, but then all through, so through our College and Career Readiness piece.
Louise?
Yeah. I certainly empathize or can understand what you're saying, though, as a parent of a senior who is going to be going to IU in the fall. It is imperative that our counselors are reaching out to these students to help them truly understand, even before this program, what is transferable in IU and what is not necessarily, because it can be very confusing. So thank you for asking that. And then I wanted to talk, you know, with, talk about with all of these awesome teachers who just retired, what's the opportunity to have more intentionality around education focus tracks for our students, since they're already in the school? And there's some good opportunities to partner, I think, with teachers, I mean, even on the tutoring or work-study front, you know, how students, once they go to college, have an opportunity to partner with professors? I wonder what could be the options to work with IU to see, you know, what can we work out on the education front and partnerships with teachers and students and those kinds of things?
Yes. And so, and actually, you'll learn more about this at our June workshop, one of the programs that we have. But we do have our Education Professionals courses. So we have two different tracks at Carmel High School that we offer through our Career and Technical Ed. It comes under that arm. But the one is through when you're looking at becoming a teacher in either elementary, middle, or high school. So that'd be our Ed Professionals courses, and then we have Principals of Ed Professionals, A and B. And so we have a whole stream of a CTE coursework. And then we also have the Early Childhood. And then we also have the early childhood ed professionals, which starts with the ed professionals, and then it looks into the early childhood. So this would be somebody that would be looking at working in a preschool setting, an early childhood setting as well. And so one of the pieces that, we already have our cadet teachers, where our students that are in those ed professional courses have the opportunity to go and spend time in our classrooms, in our elementary classrooms. Typically, they spend time in our elementary or our middle school classrooms in those ed professionals. And we are working on building a relationship with, looking at our educator classrooms, and then our, also our early childhood, which you got to learn about at our last workshop meeting, to have the students that are in that preschool part of the ed professionals strand to work in those classrooms. Where we're looking at building that out right now, the ed professionals, we have one of the courses that is a dual credit through Butler, and one is through Ball State. And so we're looking at building that out, either taking it all the way through Ball State or through Butler, looking at making, making it the same way as we have the ACP, where there's not a charge for the tuition, but they would get that dual credit, and then it would transfer into this ICC piece. The other piece that we do have at the high school is we have many tutoring opportunities where students have the National Honor Society tutor, students that are just in, we, you know, had our top scholars award ceremony last week or the week before, and many of them even talked about how some of our top scholars were tutors in those courses that they so dearly love as well. So they do have opportunities to do that tutoring with Carmel High School students as well. So we do have different opportunities, but we certainly want to continue to build that out, because we want to make sure that our best and our brightest are moving into that education field. And I know that Dr. O'Stryke has gone to our ed professionals courses, and he has talked about, you know, he's already started recruiting them very young in this coursework. So we want to make sure that we get them excited about being educators, so we can build that pathway with our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I just have a quick comment. As a parent of a 2026, having guaranteed to transfer up there is very exciting, and also the no fees, because I'm already trying to figure out how I'm going to do all that. So I think that's fantastic, that essentially you get one year of college credit done at the same time as high school, but also without any cost. So I think that's amazing. So thank you, Dr. Dudley, for that report. We will now move on to the monthly financial update. Mr. McMichael?
If I can figure out the technology, we'll be good.
Take a slight pause to breathe in deep. Yeah, I'm getting really good at this. Okay. Let me see. I want full screen. I know what I got there. Okay. Well, so we're three months into the year. We're really on track with where we would have projected. You can see here that in our three funds, our education fund, referendum fund, and rainy day, after three months, we have an ending cash balance of just over 1.9 million. This was a three-pay month, so you'll notice that it dropped considerably because of that, which was different than, I think it was in, it was in January last year. So now we're kind of comparing apples to apples from one year to the next. And so by March of last year, we had about a million dollars, but we also had, we have more money this year in the, and you'll see that later in the rainy day fund, so that's primarily where it's at. And then we are running ahead, which we need to, because we, we try to maintain our balances as a percentage, and so as the budget grows, then, you know, the dollar amount needs to increase as well. Going to our operations fund, we, we, we're at negative $3 million, which is typical, because as you can see at the top, because this is a, a fund that's primarily funded with property tax, we're spending the money, but we, we don't have the tax draws yet until May, starting in May. And then again, as compared to last year, we were right at three, 3 million in the red by, by March. Then those, of course, will come out into the black as we get in to receive our tax draws. And then you see here, our rainy day fund is pretty much, you know, it's, we, we don't typically use this fund at this point. It's, it's a cash reserve most of the time, and, and so we're, we're at 2.3 million, and last year, we were at just under 1.5. So with that, I'll respond to any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you. We will, we will now move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Boy, it's been a good night. I wanted to add to Dr. O'Stryke's thank you to the Clay staff for, it takes a lot of work to move a school board meeting to this auditorium. And we do that, you know, purposely, so that we can really have a good venue to have our reception for our retirees and our, our award winners. And, and we wanted to, you know, to have that situation, but I know it's a lot of work, so I really appreciate that. And also a big shout out to Bernie up there in the sound, running the, the sound and the technology with our technology team. It took a lot of hands to put this together, so I appreciate those efforts so that we could have a good, a good evening for our, our amazing teachers. My report, I'm sorry, Amy, but I had a, I had a conversation that led me to, to get information about AP testing. And so I know this is in your domain, but I'm, I'm just going to kind of dive in, and I'm hoping I won't mess it up too much. But with 2023 AP testing is right around the corner, they do that AP testing May 1st through the 12th this year. We currently have 2,135 students registered to take 4,093 AP exams here in May, 1 through 12. This is an increase, and it's been a pretty steady increase over the last five years, with a big jump in, in '22, and it looks like even a bigger jump here in '23. So that's just a whole lot of tests, and we'll get those scores back in July. So last year, we had 1,699 of 1,853 students score a three or higher on their AP exam. That's crazy high. Additionally, of the total of 3,673 AP exams given, 3,310 of them scored a three or higher. That's 90% of the students who take an AP exam are scoring a three or higher. So it's, it's pretty amazing. Of our students that enrolled in an AP class, approximately 90% of them take the exam. So not all students that take an AP class take an exam, but 90% do, and that's a pretty high percentage as well. And of that 90%, 90% of them score a three or better. So kudos to our students who are not only challenging themselves by taking AP tests, but they're also knocking it out of the park. And, and when I had that conversation with Valerie Peel at the high school, I said, I need to share this with, with, in my superintendent's report, because our kids are doing some amazing work, and wanted to point that out. Along that same line, I wanted to congratulate several people in the district, because Carmel Clay Schools is named a Green Ribbon School by the United States Department of Education. And let me tell you what that means, it's, and it was just in time for Earth Day, the U.S. Department of Education announced Carmel Clay Schools is among the 2023 Department of Ed Green Ribbon School districts, sustainable awardees, sustainability is the, the key. So across the country, only 26 schools, and only 11 districts. And then four post-secondary institutions are being honored for their innovative efforts to reduce the environmental impact and utility costs, so that's criteria one, improved health and wellness, criteria two, and ensure effective sustainability education. Now, Ramona Rice, I believe, was the, the lead on that, on our application to that. And, and it really impacts all the different divisions of our district. So it included Mr. McMichael and, and his team in several different areas. It also included, you know, with our curricular team, all of our pieces in our, our mechanicals and our, you know, and all of our energy savings, and then even food service with our composting and, and, you know, waste reduction, that sort of thing. So a big kudos to all involved to achieve that honor. And, you know, this is something that's important for us to, to, to take charge of and take lead of, because we have a responsibility to leave the, the place and hopefully better than we found it. And, and those steps are, are, are well done, and I'm just proud that, that we were recognized by the United States Department of Education for that.
Did you say 11 districts in the country?
11 school districts in the country.
Wow, okay.
So we're one of 11. Another amazing accomplishment was that we were notified that Governor Holcomb each year has what he calls his STEM team. And what he does is he picks four scholars from the state of Indiana, and one for every letter of STEM. So a science, a technology, and engineering, and math. And so I'm very happy to, that these, these, the, the Department of Education announced the four members of the Governor's 2023 STEM team. It's a prestigious award, recognizes outstanding high school students who demonstrate exceptional talent and accomplishments in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and math. Congratulations to Carmel High School Senior Catherine Yu, who was chosen for the M. So she is the M, she is the math on the team. In addition to being selected as a member of the Governor's STEM team, each student are awarded a $1,000 scholarship deposited into an Indiana College Choice 529 Direct Savings Plan, so there's a, a little plug for that, that's administered by the Treasurer of the state. And they also get a letterman's jacket, a letterman's jacket, and identifying them as a member of the, as the Governor's STEM team. To tell you just a little bit about Catherine, because besides, in addition to her amazing academic skills, Catherine volunteers in an assisted living facility that's near her home, and that helped her realize the lack of independence caused by chronic illnesses. So her research efforts in glaucoma and Alzheimer's disease using the CRISPR, that's C-R-I-S-P-R, inference sparked a passion for improving health for all. Now, for those of you who are probably wondering right now, what is CRISPR? I looked it up, and it's a genetic perpetu, let me see, perturbation technique that allows for sequence-specific repression of gene expression in two genes that I cannot pronounce. And so, needless to say, she's a pretty sharp kid. And so anyhow, she plans to study, what would you think, biomedical engineering, and so that she can give people who suffer from chronic illnesses their freedom back. And so it just makes me even prouder of the amazing, you know, academics, but also the, the heart for people. So congratulations to, to Catherine, we're very proud of you. Again, we were also notified this week that the 20, that Stephanie Barnes, who's the Language Arts Department chair at Creekside, has been named a 2023-24 Armstrong Teacher/Educator for the Indiana University School of Education. So this award recognizes outstanding teachers across Indiana with the intent to bring the awardees to campus, so she'll be making some trips to Bloomington, to interact with students and faculty in the IU School of Education. So you were asking a minute ago about how we go recruiting. Well, one of our, our top teachers is going to be on campus, interacting with not only the students that are going into education field, but also with the faculty of Indiana University and the Education Department. So they have that chance to interact, and it's nice to see one of our best helping shape future educators and also collaborate with the teacher preparation professors. So congratulations to, to Stephanie, and what an honor to be in Armstrong. Then tonight, you know, I always get a little bit, I, I'm so proud of our people, but I also get a little bit of sad when we have the retirees. But we had 30 employees here that have been, have been making a difference in Carmel for 20 years. I know that we were doing all the names, but I just thought you might want to hear the number. 21 25-year employees, 11 30-year employees, that's, that's 11 people that have had three decades on our team. And then we have a total of two 35-year employees, two 40-year, and then, of course, the one 45-year employee. That's an incredible, I, when I was out in the, the reception before I started, I thought, this is like being at the All-Star Game. These are people that have been making a positive impact on students for years and years and years here at Carmel Clay Schools. And not only are they making a difference individually, they're the ones that, the new teachers that come into and who mentor the, the new teachers who come either out of college or from other school districts and, and teach them, you know, the culture and the expectation of Carmel Clay Schools. So I couldn't, couldn't be prouder of them, and then I was really happy not to see a lot of them on the retiree list. Okay, some of that's understanding. But the other piece of it is to have a good culture, you know, one thing that you do is recruitment, and Dr. O's taking that to another level. But another important part of that is to really honor our retirees, the ones who have been doing the work for years and years, and who've, I don't know, you know, we had 39 retirees, of course, with one, one serving for 45 years. I don't know what the number is, the math is on that, on every, how many students those teachers had every year, but I know it's a big number, of the number of lives that they've touched over those years. And also, I want to just make one other note, that, did you notice there were bus drivers in there? And there were instructional assistants, and there are food service workers, and there are maintenance personnel. One asterisk you got to put by Mike Wyatt was on the 40-year award winner. Mike Wyatt was the person who was in the room that exploded at Carmel High School and survived, and, and came back to work, even after that, you know, that traumatic event. So a lot of respect for these people, and, and just real happy for them and thankful for them, to be honest. So celebrations this week, this is National Library Week, so it's a good day to send an email to your favorite librarian or media specialist and thank them for the work they do. It's also Administration, Administrative Professionals Week, so I know the board, you know, this is a good week to, to tell Colleen Novas over there how much you appreciate her. And, and we also have April Cole over there, another top, top-notch assistant in our, in our CIA department. But we couldn't do what we do without that kind of support. Also, this week is PR Professionals Week, that's Educational PR Professionals Week, so I think we see Emily Bauer back there in the back, and so we are going to celebrate her this week as well. So we're down to the bell ringer, and it wasn't a real hard decision this time, because it had to be the 28 teachers and staff that we surprised across the entire district last Thursday and Friday with Teacher of the Year and Support Staff of the Year awards. Katie was with us for, for a few schools. And it's funny, when we do that, it's, I always say, I feel like we're a publisher's clearinghouse, we're kind of going down, we're coming, we're knocking on the door, we're coming and going to classroom. And the reactions of the winners is always incredible, and each presentation is a little bit different in the different, the buildings. But also the excitement of the students, and the excitement of the colleagues, that when you come in there, and they're almost more happy for them than they are, you know, they're, they're just, it's just priceless, that how much they are excited and happy. We had one particular classroom where the teacher who won the, the Teacher of the Year for the elementary school wasn't in the classroom, they were in professional development. So we went to the professional development room and presented her with the award, and then we went in there, and the non-certified staff award winner was an aide in her classroom. And so I think it was Mr. English made the announcement. And so I think it was Mr. English made the announcement that, do you guys want to know who the Teacher of the Year for Cherry Tree is? And they were like, yeah. And, and then when, when he mentioned their teacher's name, the kids exploded, they were hugging each other, they were screaming and yelling and jumping up and down, and they were so excited that their teacher and their IA got picked as, as, as the honorees for that room.
I was, I was at that one. You would have thought that they won it. They were so, they were fist bumping and excited. I mean, it was like the best day of their 11 years of life. I mean, it was, you know, they were so happy and excited, and so, but I mean, and then the sincerity of the, seeing their coworkers, how excited they were, that was great. And then, as I already interrupted you, I'm going to say one more story. One of my favorites was this teacher won, and everyone's celebrating, and high fives and everything, and the kids are all excited, she's, and then she turns, she's like, okay, now we got to get working with I-Learn. Like, she kind of stopped her own little presentation to like really kind of get focused back. I just think that was such an educator-teacher moment right there, where, you know, she didn't want the attention on her, she knew she, she wanted to kind of prepare her students. I thought that was really cool.
It was extremely cool. And so it's a great thing to honor so many individuals who make a positive difference in the lives of students and families we serve. But also, you know, the impact they have on their colleagues and their students, it's just, it was just great days. And so very few times do you get to spend about two full days filling buckets and really bringing good news, and really, you know, really giving honor and respect and attention to folks that, that show up every day, you know, to, to make a difference in the life of a kid. So with that, I will end my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple announcements for upcoming meetings. Crazy as it is, we are almost to May. There is no workshop in May, we will have our regular session on May 15th, and the last day of school is May 25th. So crazy that, how fast that we've gotten going. I will now take a motion to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor? Second? All those in favor, soon as we're saying aye? Meeting adjourned.